Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda with additions to the HR report. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you so much. Next, we would like to ask Principal Richard Albano to please come forward from our Mendon Center Elementary School.
This is a good group because no one claps.
That was a warmer welcome than I expected. Thank you guys very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Rich Albano. I'm the principal at Mendon Center. So I wanted to start by thanking the board, thanking central office team for all your support at Mendon Center, thanking Jess Lavanne, our assistant principal, for making a seamless entry into her first year as assistant principal at Mendon Center and the transition from Sutherland High School. We're lucky to have her. It's been really remarkable, the relationships in just a short year she's made with students and families and staff. Thanks. Also, of course, thank you to our dedicated staff at Mendon Center and to our families, our parents, and our students who make Mendon Center such a special place. We began our school year focusing on Mendon Center's culture. We're lucky Ms. Heather Clayton left us in a really good place, so we're just continuing to kind of reinforce where we've been. We celebrated our strengths and really focused our conversations around gratitude, recognizing our foundation of staff safety, trust, and belonging, and focusing on a community of collaboration. As we kicked off the school year, we established three mantras to help us guide our beliefs and our values, focusing on what's best for kids, supporting our colleagues, and also having fun. We recognized early that when adults enter the building and they're in a good place and they can be prepared for kids, then we're creating a welcoming, affirming environment for all our children. We reference these norms throughout the, I should say, these mantras throughout the year, during group meetings like our instructional leadership team, during smaller group meetings like our SEL committee. We also use these three mantras as a foundation to build norms for meetings about students, for meetings about structure in the building, and it's always helped this year guide us and stay focused on these important priorities. In building our school community for students, staff, and families, we recognize that our traditions are critical. A couple that we're really proud of, number one, our Welcome Back picnic that happens in September that could not happen without all of the hard work from our PTSA is amazing. This year, I think we had over 1,000 students, parents, and staff there at the picnic back in our green space, and it's a wonderful time for everyone to get back to Mendon Center and get ready for the school year. Another that we're really always proud of is our International Day. International Day happens every other year at Mendon Center. We just celebrated it in March, and this is really a big deal for our community because we're proud of how culturally diverse we are. One particular part of the event that I'll share is we do almost like a museum walk of tables set up around the building where countries or cultures are represented. This year, we had over 25 tables representing cultures or countries from those 25 different locations manned by parents or families or grandparents so that our kids could walk around the building, meet those individuals, learn about the different cultures in countries around the world represented at Mendon Center. A new one that was a lot of fun, no pun intended, this year was our MCE Stride and Shine Fun Run. This was a wonderful PTSA-led fundraiser that we did during the school day. Kids were able to get outside, get a run-in, get some exercise, have some fun. If I go back, we really leaned into the fun factor. You can see on the right here, our second grade team surprised everyone by showing up in animal inflatables and doing a couple laps in their inflatables, so they had a great time with that. Next, I'd like to talk about the work we did this year around strengthening our culture through clear purpose around three key areas, the first being our social-emotional learning. We were looking at our daily routines that foster connections and habits and encourage thoughtfulness and create a welcoming, affirming environment in school. Some of those routines that we've established and we worked to even improve this year are our morning meetings. This is where from kindergarten through fifth grade, you could see in a classroom kids sitting together in a circle, sharing a greeting, using each other's names, sharing news or something that's important to them in their life, and also just building foundational skills like taking turns. We rely on facilitating restorative meetings between children in order to solve conflict and help them work through issues that they might have. Also, really great programs like our kindergarten and first-grade buddies, which gives both our youngest and oldest kids a chance to connect with other students in the building. And this year, we really did work with our fifth-grade safeties, not only to be present during arrival and dismissal, but also to give them some prompts to greet children, have a smile on their face, and really help build that welcoming feeling from students to other students. The next key area is our care and support for all learners. We're proud to be a hub for E&amp;L instruction for elementary schools in Pittsford Schools along with Allen Creek Elementary. This year, we had, I think, eight students that came to us not speaking any English, and it's amazing to see the progress that they made this year. I always get a kick out of a few of them that walk by and say, "Hello, Mr. Albano," and I'm not sure how much else they've learned besides that, but they love that and they feel confident and they love to share that they're learning English at school. Of course, our support of students in special education. We're working, we worked this year to have meetings with teachers, our data team meetings, in order to look at performance of children that might need a little bit extra help in academic intervention services, and also to support our students that participate and benefit from instructional challenge. The next key area is academic growth and exploration in ELA. So this area has really been driven this year by work that our district did in our ELA program review and recognizing some of the areas that were really important for our students to make progress in ELA growth, particularly in K-2, we're embracing science of reading, best practices, and routines. A couple examples are our foundations routine, which helps kids develop their phonics skills, and also our hegemony routine for our youngest learners, which focuses on phonemic awareness, letter name identification, things like that. Then our students transition to third grade through fifth grade where they moved away from learning to read and more of a focus on reading for meaning, so reading for information, and most importantly, we find reading for the love of literature. A great example of that is just recently, in the last month, our fifth grade team introduced a new program they call Battle of the Books. It's seen here, where again with the partnership of PTSA and funding, they've been reading novels for the last three weeks. Some children read one novel, some children read six novels, and then the commenting activity started today where they were put into mixed-group teams and were able to compete in a supportive way to answer questions about the books that they've been reading. And it was amazing to see them engaged in reading, engaged in literature, and really be excited about what they're learning and the books that they're experiencing at school. And also in math. So we spent this year supporting our recommendations from our recent math grouping practices, particularly looking at varying instructional groups as often as possible. So that means making sure that children have an opportunity to work in partnerships with other children that have different learning styles and are learning that they have different strengths in mathematics. We've been building and practicing essential math conceptual skills through both direct instruction with teachers, but also student-centered partnerships, visible active workspaces around the classroom. So you wouldn't be surprised to be in Mendon Center and see what I call the great big whiteboards in a class, and partnerships at whiteboards, working on math problems, and in many cases, engaging performance tasks that are multi-stepped and really pushing their thinking. With that, I'll wrap up by jumping back to the beginning of the year, where we celebrated in September our Welcome Back Assembly with all of our students. Our message and vision this year was "We Care." Like in the past, we've got a grade level representing every one of the colors, so all of those people that you see are students or adults wearing their grade level colors to form our message, "We Care." It was meant to connect and focus on caring and friendship at Mendon Center, also connected to a book that we all shared and talked about, "The Circles All Around Us." We know that our students come to us with circles of caring, including their family. They get to Mendon Center and create circles of caring with friends and their classes, and then eventually, we hope that it's a circle of caring for the whole Mendon Center community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Albano. We want you to know that we appreciate the building tour, but the best part is always to interact with the staff and see the smiles and friendly faces. So thank you, and to see the work that the kids are doing. We got to go into one of the classrooms, and that was very exciting.
It was great to host everyone.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I could just share, we have principals that are here, and they do not give applause at the beginning and at the end. I don't want you to think this is the norm, but this audience is amazing. So, Rich?
Well, I've been at Mendon Center for eight years, but this is my first year as principal, so I guess that's what I get.
Happy for you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we will have Board Action, three approvals of minutes. So the first one will be from May 12, 2025, a special meeting with one abstention. Renee, so may I have a motion? Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. The next minutes are from May 13, 2025. May I have a motion to accept those? Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. And the third meeting was a special meeting, and we have an abstention from Renee, but may I have a motion to approve those? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So for Board of Education reports, we have none. Our work is complete at this point, and we get to begin again July 1. But for now, so we'll move right to our dates to remember. June... Yes, okay. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. We have a report from Audit Oversight Committee, our chair, Renee Kazakos.
So this will be very brief. I know that you're going to cover much of what we actually talked about at the meeting, but we did meet on 5/28. We had our annual meeting with Mr. Zuber. He is our external auditor for the district to discuss the purpose of the audit and any changes and new information that could potentially be on the horizon, which again is in our packet. We also had a presentation from Sidera to discuss the security gap assessment. The district did well and is continuing to work on areas identified as potentially at risk. Ginny, the claims auditor, presented her report, and everything continues to look very good on that end. And Rachel, our district treasurer, gave an update on reserves and our balances in anticipation of the fund balance and reserve recommendations that are being presented tonight.
And that is all that I have, and I'd also like to say that was my last meeting on Audit Oversight because my term is up, and I just wanted to thank you guys for that opportunity to be able to learn so much about the budget and the audits and how things work internally, and I'm looking forward to see who takes over next.
Thank you so much, Renee, for your service, and she served several terms. We appreciate that. Dates to remember, June 19. Our schools are closed for June 19. June 21, what an exciting time, Sutherland High School graduation, 10 o'clock at RIT, and Mendon High School graduation, 2 o'clock at RIT. On June 8, we have our summer workshop from 8 to 3. By a show of hands, may I see who can attend? Thank you. Thank you. And also, June 8 is our next regularly scheduled board meeting at 5:00 PM, and on July 9, I'm sorry, is summer workshop again from 8 to noon. Next, may I have a motion to accept the record of May 2025 budget vote and school board election? Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you, and we thank you to our, we have many thanks to our community for that budget vote and school board election results. Next, we have a motion to accept the approval of the superintendent's contract. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you so much. And now we will have a financial report from Mr. Terry Hasler.
Hello. Good evening, Board of Education, district leadership, community. Start off with the acceptance of the treasurer's report for April 30, 2025. The only major item of note is to, we received the final amount of taxes from Monroe County, unpaid taxes. That's pretty much the only item that's of material worth mentioning for your consideration for acceptance.
Thank you. So we will have the 11 items for your consideration and action, and we will begin with the acceptance of the treasurer's report from April 30, 2025. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. The next action for your consideration is the Transpo Bus Services LLC Contract ESY 2025 that you reviewed in your packets. May I have a motion to accept that? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. None opposed? The next action is our 2025-2026 Food Service Budget and Prices. Thank you. All in favor? Yes, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that approving this budget won't have any ramifications. It won't restrict our ability to switch into the national lunch program for the 25-26 school year, should we so choose.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, all in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to accept the fund balance management and reserve recommendations? Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Next, for your consideration is budget transfer request out of district special ed placements. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Next action is budget transfer request for technology. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Next, for your consideration, reduction of teachers' retirement reserve. May I have a motion to accept that? Okay, are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Next is auction of buses resolution? Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have the declaration of surplus equipment from food service. Thank you. Any questions about that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have a motion, may we have a motion to entertain the declaration of obsolete equipment athletics? Thank you. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? And finally, may I have a motion to accept the intermunicipal agreement between Monroe County and PCSD for intermunicipal grant funding agreement, food waste pilot program resolution? Okay, any questions?
Sorry, I've got a question.
This will be a roll call.
Oh, okay. So I just noticed in the contract that it says, "We anticipate having less food waste because we don't participate in the national program," so I just wanted to make sure that if we do choose to participate in the national program, that won't jeopardize this contract for composting, and conversely, this composting contract won't restrict our ability to participate in the national program if we choose.
Timing is everything. So we applied for the grant, knowing that we wanted to target at least one elementary school for composting specifically. So we weren't expecting to get approved for it, because we never get approved for grants, and we were approved. So when we submitted for that, we did that in good faith, and regardless, there's going to be waste if we're in one program versus the other. So I think ethically and by the letter of our signature and the intent, we're fine.
Thank you. So again, this will be a roll call vote, and we will start with our president-elect, Casey. Vice President Palucio.
Yes.
Member Burke.
Yes.
Member Kay.
Yes.
Member Hughes.
Yes.
Member Kazakos.
Yes.
And member Scott. President Scott. Be consistent. Thank you. And our bid awards will be on the consent agenda? And we will move to our human resources report. Mr. Clark?
Thank you very much. First, for your consideration is the professional staff report. We have 11 certificated staff appointments, five regular substitute, two probationary appointments, two school-related professional appointments. We have one administrator resignation for retirement, two certificated staff resignations, and three school-related professional resignations.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the professional staff report? Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Clark? Thanks. Next, for your consideration, we have the support staff report. We have two clerical appointments, four clerical resignations, two clerical resignations for retirement, three transportation appointments, four custodial maintenance appointments, one custodial maintenance resignation for retirement, two food service appointments, and one food service resignation.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the support staff report?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor? And so I would like to begin with an announcement, and it is with gratitude and solemnity that our entire Pittsford Schools Board of Education announced the retirement of Superintendent Michael Piro after 30 years of service. Superintendent Mike Piro is a compassionate leader who has steadfastly championed our district's mission, values, and vision throughout his tenure. We thank him for his skilled leadership and unwavering dedication to the students and staff of Pittsford Schools. His last official day as superintendent will be December 1, 2025. He has agreed to stay on through January as deputy superintendent to assist with the transition and oversee the business office while our assistant superintendent for business is on medical leave. Please join me in giving Mike the first standing ovation in recognition of his service to our school district.
I love this crowd. Whatever you want. We can skip public comment, just say it. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate you so much. We didn't vote on that one. Yes, we did. So next, it is with impending excitement that our entire Board of Education shared the next announcement with a preface as it relates to process. The Board of Education is responsible for selecting, hiring, and reviewing our community's superintendent of schools. Once Superintendent Piro communicated his intent to retire, our Board of Education began educating itself with the Monroe County School Boards Association Professional Development Event and Title Superintendent Search and Contract Negotiations. And our president of MSBA is here with us tonight. She's a former president of our school board, Amy Thomas. Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity for our learning. And so that was presented by Monroe Boses I and Boses II district superintendents at that time, Joanne Antonacci and Dan White, in April 2024. We followed up with further consultation last summer and decided upon an internal candidate who was later interviewed and observed in action throughout the year, and I should add an "S" to that. With that, we present to you the next superintendent of Pittsford Schools fortified with experience, institutional knowledge, and ready to collaborate. That person is Shayna Kataya. Thank you. I have more to say. So experience. Ms. Kataya began her career with our district in 2003 as a social studies teacher at Barker Road Middle School. She later became assistant principal at Brighton's 12 Cornice Middle School before returning to Pittsford in 2014 as principal of Barker Road Middle School, a position she held into 2021. Institutional knowledge. In 2021, Kataya was appointed Director of Student Services, and you all know that this is a catch-all position. She gets touchpoints with so many people in our school district, so many units, you know, students, staff. But anyway, formerly she oversees areas of health and safety counseling, nursing services, registration, enrollment records, and social-emotional support programs, just to name a few. Prepared to collaborate. She holds a Bachelor's of Arts in History and Secondary Education from Nazareth University and a Master's in Educational Leadership from St. John Fisher University. She also earned certifications in school district administration from SUNY Brockport and Human Resources Management from Cornell University. Most recently, she participated in the Future Superintendent's Academy 2023-2024 and Harvard University's Civic Leadership in the Superintendency Program in 2024. I think she's ready. Okay? Finally, she will officially assume the role on December 1, and our board, our entire board, is confident that Ms. Kataya is someone we know and trust to lead the district, uphold its values, and continue putting students first. that Ms. Kataya is someone we know and trust to lead the district, uphold its values, and continue putting students first. So thank you again. Oh, yes. And we will be voting. Well, thank you. I have to contain my excitement. But we will be voting on our next superintendent.
Thank you, President Scott. So for your consideration is the appointment of the new superintendent of schools.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept? Thank you. All in favor? I oppose. Thank you so much.
And finally, for your consideration is the approval of the new superintendent's contract.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept approval of that? Thank you. All in favor? The ayes have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we will now have our special education report from Ms. Woods.
Good evening. The Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education recommendations are on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next, we will have our superintendent's report. Mr. Piro.
Thank you, Robin. There is not a need for an executive session this evening. Wanted to give special thank yous, three of them in particular. One for a donation of a new buddy, an art circular outdoor bench valued at $2,100, and four steel soccer goals with nets, another $2,600 from Allen Creek PTSA to Allen Creek Elementary School. Thank you, Allen Creek and PTSA. We have a donation of $4,388 that came from our school foundation that is used to pay the stipends for advisors for our TELIT program, which is to grow our own teachers from within, as well as our EduBridge program, which is our connections with partnerships between the Jewish Foundation and with Modine in Israel. And then third, donation of $8,000 from PTSA for the All-Popular Gaga Pit to be placed at Jeff Road It's About Time Elementary School. So thank you, PTSA, for all your donations. We do have, typically, I don't do any kind of formal presentation, but we have several policies and things happening at the state level. So I'm going to leave my seat and come on up to the front.
So, so I want to thank the Board of Education
for all their work with different policies and procedures that have come from the state. One is our responsibility, starting July 1, to have created a process and then to have selected students to be on our Board of Education. And I'll talk about that in a minute. Second, which has been a big deal, is the governor just passed in the May budget a distraction-free school environment, which means essentially that's no cell phones in schools across the state. The third, the governor passed in her budget policies around heat mitigation. And then, fourth, she also passed the concept of all schools, public schools in New York State to offer universal free meals. So I just want to give a two-sided overview of each of these. So we, starting July 1, will have an ex officio stew board members sitting at the table with us. The rules are as follows. They are not allowed to vote. They are not allowed to attend executive sessions or things where things have to be really confidential. And like you, are not allowed to receive compensation. And they will serve on our board for one year. And then we had to think through how they were going to be selected to serve on the Board of Education. So we brought it back to the buildings. Principals established a selection committee and nominated either a junior or a senior to serve for that one-year period. That nominated student must be then approved through each building's instructional leadership team. Once selected, so right now, we have both members selected. But I really don't feel comfortable sharing that at this time because some students haven't been informed that they weren't selected that wanted to be on. So we want to make sure we get to all the students first. The students that were selected from Mendon and Sutherland, they will receive an email introduction from the Board of Education next, kind of a get-to-know-you, back and forth with some questions. They will then attend a summer training on being a board member from Monroe County School Boards Association. And part of them being on our school boards means that they will be responsible for logging in like our board does for agendas in advance. And then at every meeting, they will provide insights and highlights around Sutherland and around Mendon. At that point, they can decide if they want to stay for the duration of the board meeting or if they want to leave. We do understand how busy students are, and we're trying to maximize the amount of students that are eligible for this. So they may stay for every board meeting or they may leave after their report. So that is the first, we spent a board retreat or two figuring this out. So we're in good shape for that. The distraction-free environment, the board, obviously, we've spent a few retreats on this. And what the governor shared is that all schools across New York State are not allowed to have internet-enabled devices. We also, in our policy, added any messaging devices to go with the intent of the governor's law. So for example, students may be able to message each other through things that you don't need the internet for. And so we added that line. If we want a distraction-free environment, then we wanted a distraction-free environment. There's great detail into what an entire day means. You may have heard bell-to-bell. But specifically, that means that cell phones are off and/or on airplane mode the entire day, including lunch, study hall, and passing time. They should not have access to their phones. So at the secondary level, phones will be stored in their school locker. At the elementary level, we have a little bit of work to still do, but we're thinking that they'll probably be somewhere housed in the classroom. We also had to figure out, and will be a little bit more specific in our regulations, a way for parents to get a hold of students and students to get a hold of their parents or guardians at the same time. There's also areas of where students can have phones on them, specifically if it's on their IEP or if it's on 504 or if there's medical considerations. And then we also will be adding in our regulations that if there's a case-by-case basis, there's something unusual that we're not thinking about where a student needs the phone on them, that a building administrator can approve that. And then we also share in the policy what violations will be. And we all agree that this needs to be really progressive in nature, especially our first year. So thinking about if a student has their phone out or is texting or doing anything with her phone during the day, we would look at the start as warnings. Then we would probably involve parents after that. If it happens again, we're going to take your phones away too. If it happens again, after that, we'll look at probably detentions or progressive, right? All the way to the extreme, which would be an in-school suspension. Students will not be suspended out of school for multiple violations. So those things will be a little bit more concrete, and they'll be placed in our code of conduct. As far as feedback on the policy, it's really interesting. The governor pretty much laid out everything that we needed to adhere to. But we did work with our parent advisory council, starting in the fall in anticipation of this. Our Special Education Parent Council provided a lot of amazing feedback. We had about close to 100 parents attend our power hour to provide feedback. We spent our administrative meetings and our PDLT. And we've also met with teacher leaders. And my student advisory council provided amazing feedback to the policy. So the policy is what, it specifies what you can and can't do. The regulations get into the day-to-day operations of what we mean by the policy. So we will roll out the regulations or will work on the regulations more specifically in our summer retreat when we have teacher leaders, parent leaders, Board of Education. And that will be on day two. So for example, how clear can we be with violations? What do we do if around, how to decide if a special dispensation should be given for someone to have a phone? What does that look like? Social supports are things we're going to need to talk about at our retreat. This is a big deal. Having phones away from students after being connected nonstop all the time, that's going to be habit-breaking or addiction-breaking, so we need to be prepared for that. Our high school students do not use their lockers right now. And so getting accustomed to walking in school, putting your phone in the locker. If you, we have an open campus, so if you leave for lunch, you go to your locker, take it out. You can go to lunch and have your phone. But when you come back in the building, it's going back in the locker. And then we have other areas that we need to figure out as far as distractions. What do we do with the AirPods, games, videos, et cetera? But I think the biggest thing is we're going to need to find a way to assess how the policy is working out. Are there areas that we need to change in the policy, revise regulations, et cetera? And then again, we have the progressive discipline piece. So thank you to the board for your time with that. Thank you for everyone that's provided feedback. We've had quite a bit. The next policy is heat mitigation. So the governor passed in her budget that schools must have a policy when schools get to a certain temperature. So what she shared was 82 degrees is the magic number. So in classrooms, if the classroom itself is 82 degrees, these are the things that we need to be prepared to do. Turning off, things to lower the temperature or to not have it rise, common sense, things pulling down the shades. We have emailed all staff to make sure that there is accessibility to fans in the classroom, opening windows, working with our HVAC, turning off unused electronics, providing water breaks. Excuse me. And then the second part is what happens if your classroom gets to 88 degrees, which is pretty warm. And the policy has language in there where you'll see we're practical, practicable. So the district will remove students and staff from that area where we can. The superintendent or designee may direct principals to have people leave that classroom. So for example, I think of third floor at Sutherland. You know, what happens if a classroom's at 88 degrees there? So looking for cooler spaces within the school building for that class to go to. And also, we now have consideration for closing school in the event we can't cool a classroom down and it becomes a health and safety concern. So that is another policy that the board has worked on. And then we have the universal free meals, which isn't a policy, but it was in the governor's budget. So the governor's budget was signed into law May 9, which says that schools can provide free breakfast and free lunch, K through 12, should you decide to enroll in the program. The frustration a little bit, which isn't surprising. And I don't mean that in disrespect at all, but when a budget passes in May, then you're not going to get your first guidance until a little bit later. So on June 5, we received our first guidance, which talked about some of the logistics, which means that our free and reduced lunch forms still need to be completed, regardless if you're buying the lunch or breakfast or not. We have to outwardly encourage families to apply based on their income. And then three times a year, we must submit to the state regarding how we're doing relative to participation. A lot of this really is about how much money is the federal government going to kick in versus the state government? And so what the governor has asked schools to do is to reach out and encourage those forms to be submitted and all of that stuff. We had follow-up questions from the June 5 guidance. We had questions like, can we participate incrementally by grade level? Can we start later in the year? And we start, answers are starting to trickle in on those. And the answers are yes and yes, is what we've heard so far. Our second guidance is coming tomorrow. And then there's this deadline to apply by July 29. And I have to thank, Elaine, I believe, is here, right? I have to thank Elena for this. She's our food service director sitting in the back. She took the proactive stance of submitting for universal free meals for all nine of our buildings. And so what we have found out is we can submit to go into the universal free meals right now and at any point we can enter or at any point we can rescind. So that July 29 date now becomes moot for us because we will have met that deadline and we'll meet that deadline by next week, I think. And that gives us a lot of flexibility now. Some of our concerns that we have are, and I think all school districts have, is the financial sustainability relative to how much the state can actually fund throughout this and then what's going to happen with the federal government if they decide on any cuts midway or at the beginning. Things that we just need to figure out. But the bottom line with this is that our pledge is to make meals as nutritious and delicious as possible, regardless of where we are. So if we join the program, that's one issue. And then you have another issue, which is quality, quantity of food, nutrition of food, et cetera. So what we're excited to do, and I have to thank Elena so much for being so open-minded and gracious about her desire to continuously improve in this area. So I would just share with everyone that's here speaking and everyone here that's written to the board, thank you for your feedback, knowing that we want to, and we are taking it very, very seriously. So currently, what we're doing, we are sending our applications to join for all nine of our schools. Our plan is to survey the community. So what we want to make sure of is that we're doing, whichever direction we go, we want to make sure the community is behind us. And so if the community is very favorable around the universal free meals, great. That's significant for us. We also recognize that in order to do better, we probably, I think you heard Rich, talk about a curriculum review. I think we need to do something similar relative to food service. So pulling together parent reps, student reps, admin, possibly a consultant that can visit our cafeterias, visit Elena, see where the food's prepped, see what our menu looks like, provide ideas for different and more exciting food. Look at our pros and cons and do better in every sense of the word. So like anything we do, there's always areas for continuous improvement. So we want this to be collaborative. We want to make the right decision. We want to do what's right for our students and our community. So we're going to be reaching out in very short order relative to people's thoughts around food service and specifically, what are people's thoughts about entering the universal free meals? To be very candid, it's hard to say no, right, to something that's free for all students. So I'm expecting and hoping that people really reply to the survey. So we'll be sending something out to say, look for a survey. And then a survey will go out, and there'll be a reminder about the survey. And so we really can get a sense of where does the community sit with all of this. So if we decide to participate in the universal program, some of our logistics that we're going to have to contend with are things like our staffing needs. How many more people are we going to have to hire? Thinking that we're going to have more people purchase, or not purchasing, but receiving food during the day. We are probably going to have to look at our food service lines. And then, because right now, our food service lines are designed to feed X amount of students during a 20-minute lunch period at the elementary school versus what would the extra traffic look like in those lines? And then does that mean we're going to have to look at schedules in any way? We're going to look at menus and what the ordering looks like. And then we have to look at timing and pacing. So that essentially means, timing means, when would we be prepared for this? So is it possible for us to start the program in September, for example, with our K through 5 students? But maybe need a little bit more time for the secondary students to jump in? You name the date, December, January? And so those are the types of things that we need to review and be prepared for. So with that, oop, we have more. If we do not decide to participate, If we do not decide to participate in the universal program, we then will shift our gears to how do we make what we do better? And so what that means is we would obviously continue our free and reduced lunch program for students who socio-economically meet that criteria. And then have that same committee, regardless, then look at working with our food service on menu and offerings and, and then how do we communicate better and educate our community better and our students better? What they can and can't have and what's, what are the schedules look like? What's the nutritional value? And then, you know, continuously strive for improvement in this area. So thank you for all of your work relative to policy and helping unpack a lot of what we're, we're working through in a short amount of time. So with that, I would open it up for any questions for the board. Let me just make sure I don't have another slide. Oh, I do, but not around this. Any, any other questions?
Do we still have to review the bidding process like we always do as far as ordering and purchasing? Regardless as to which way we go?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's different, different pros and cons to that being in the program and out of the program.
Are there any restrictions from the state for the federal level?
So that's a good question, Ray. So what we, we met this morning. And it was very interesting trying to word a survey to get the results of, to try to target the questions we really wanted answers to. And, and then we got to a point saying, but people are, are answering these questions without having background knowledge. So Elena has been wonderful to say she will do a one-page. If we're in the program, here's what to expect. If we're not in the program, here's what to expect. And so that will, we're going to ask people to read that first and then answer the survey next. And I think a lot of those questions would be, would be answered there. Regardless of where we go, we will be looking for volunteers. So we'll be working through PTSA for parent volunteers. We'll be working with our principals for probably an elementary level, secondary level. And then as far as students as well and, and other staff members. Okay, so just, I'm almost done. Congratulations, Shayna. I had no idea this was happening. I, I don't know where my retirement came from, but Robin, thank you for the very kind words. But Shayna, I just want to say to you, congratulations for this well-earned and well-deserved appointment. Your elite level of leadership has been seen at both the principal level at Barker Road and throughout your tenure at the district level in student services. Your institutional knowledge, your pedagogy as a leader, and your student-centered approach to all problems and possibilities will serve this community well. Pittsburgh is fortunate for your willingness to serve at the highest level. After thirty-something years, I could not think of someone to come in and do a better job. So congratulations. So this is really, I promise. Thank yous to Dr. Kimmer. Dr. Kimmer is retiring this year. And Jeff, you've been instrumental in so much of our successes as a district. You are the person that does things behind the scenes so things can operate smoothly. During COVID, we would not have survived without you. You were up every morning sending out surveys before a lot of people woke up. You assisted with distribution of tests. You submitted all of our county and state reports. You did the stuff that no one wanted to do and you never complained about it. You led our enrollment boundary study and execution of that, based on your phenomenal year one, year five, and year ten projections on our enrollment. You've also enhanced our district significantly, both in the form of personal safety relative to professional data and physical safety with a lot of your ingenuity of thinking around our communication systems in our building, our intruder locks, our badges, our vestibules, all which were cutting edge at the end, at the, at the, at the time and still are. So Jeff, very sincere thank you for all you've done from, on behalf of me personally and professionally. You've been amazing to work with. Thank you. And President Scott, I want to thank you for two years of steadfast leadership as the president of our Board of Education. I want to thank you for navigating controversial and at times political hot topics, for being present at nearly every function and for your deep care for our student, staff, and the community. It's amazing when I mention something about a student to Robin, she will remember it. And then she'll text me two weeks later or when we talk on the phone, she'll say, how did it work out with this student? So your care and your passion for kids is why, one of the reasons you're a remarkable leader. Also, under your leadership, we have seen two budgets pass at record levels. Never before have we gone back-to-back years at eighty percent approval, which I believe is a reflection of all your contributions. So thank you for all you do. And that concludes the superintendent report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Second? Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. The ayes have that. Thank you. So is there any old business? Any new business?
I have just something really quick, just to add to all of our celebrations. On behalf of the board, we are very excited to welcome Shayna to the new role starting in December. We have just a small gift we wanted to give to you, if I could.
When I started in 2013, I never received a gift. Things have already changed. Goodbye, Mike. Hello, Shayna.
We love you, Mike.
You're not leaving yet, Mike.
So next we have public comment, and I'd like to begin with a good evening. And our entire Board of Education received eight public comments regarding the school lunch program. You may be aware that the final site platform that supports public comment input experienced a glitch and repairs in progress. Please know that. We apologize for that and appreciate your patience. For those who are not physically present, thank you. We receive and hear your comments as we move forward. For those who are in the building, please come forward as I call your name. And we will begin with Lori Inglesby. Yes, thank you.
Lori, there's a button on the microphone.
I gotta turn it.
You got it. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight on behalf of many families in our district who are deeply concerned about the current state of our lunch program. Some of these concerned parents work within our schools and have chosen not to speak publicly, fearing repercussions if they disclose what they witnessed daily. Over the past couple of months, multiple sources have provided clear documentation showing that the district has failed to uphold the promises made when we opted out of the National School Lunch Program. I've compiled this evidence into an accessible and shareable document so that every Pittsburgh family can see what our children are offered. The evidence shows that our families are paying fifty percent more than most neighboring districts. Yet our children are receiving unbalanced meals that do not meet Pittsburgh's own minimal nutritional standards. Every day, high school students are served vegetable portions that fall short, almost always less than the required eight ounces. Fruit cups are underfilled, meals that are supposed to include meat often don't. The quality and quantity of food simply do not meet our children's needs. In 2013, the issue is food waste. In 2025, our students are feeling hungry. In response, they're buying unhealthy add-ons such as donuts, chips, and cookies, which are prominently displayed at eye level near the checkout. This not only undermines their health, but also encourages poor eating habits and substantially increases costs for our families. These concerns from parents are not new, but without clear enforceable standards, families have been powerless to bring about meaningful change. We face a critical deadline. If we do not rejoin the National School Lunch Program by July twenty-ninth, I guess, Pittsburgh families will be excluded from the free breakfast and lunch benefits New York is offering to all students next year. For years, our families have borne the burden of higher-priced lunches and we missed out on free meals during COVID years. Why should we lose millions of dollars each year to sustain a local program that has failed to deliver? Other nearby districts, Fairport, HFL, and Webster are part of the national program and have addressed the very issues that once led us to opt out. They serve nutritious visually, sorry, visually appealing meals using ingredients from local farms or school gardens. HFL allows students to self-serve vegetables, salads, eliminating unnecessary plastic and ensuring no child leaves hungry. Fairport runs a composting program and uses it to teach students about sustainability. They've even created educational videos to show students what a lunch includes and how to minimize the waste. They've turned lunch into a learning opportunity. If those districts can thrive under the national program, so can we. Enrolling in the NSLP is a chance to save millions of dollars and ensure our students receive the nutritionally balanced meals they deserve. I urge Pittsburgh families to review the evidence we've provided and when the time comes, vote to opt back into the national lunch program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Inglesby. Next, we will have Ethan Inglesby. Please come forward.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ethan and I'm a Menden High School student. I'm here to talk to you about several things I find disappointing about our lunch program. When I started school in Pittsburgh, lunches were served on washable, reusable trays. Now each student that buys lunch wastes about four plastic cups each day. I did some math and if only half of our Pittsburgh students bought lunch and used four cups per day, this adds up to over two million cups going into the landfill each year. That makes me sad. It goes against everything they teach us in school about reduce, reuse, and recycle. We should do better. In addition, we are served pancakes and waffles warmed up in plastic wrappers. This is not what I would expect in our district. It is unhealthy to eat, to heat food in plastics. In health class, they tell us to fill our plate half-full of colorful fruits and vegetables, which is impossible with the portions of veggies that are currently being offered. The inconsistency between the signage and what lunch workers tell us has created confusion among us students. When this effort began, I asked my friends what they thought a lunch consisted of, and none of them really knew. Nearly every day, I selected the baby carrot cup. They only contain five baby carrots. That is not what a proper portion for a seventeen-year-old boy should be. I found out recently that it's not even close to the one cup serving that the district says is the minimum per day. At HFL, under the national program, their students self-serve as many carrots or salad as they want without all those cups. I took photographic evidence of our lunches and measured the scoop sides served at Menden High School. The majority of the sides were half a cup, some of them were a quarter of a cup. And only once did I ever get served one whole cup of green beans. These portions are part of the reason why I spent hundreds of dollars on extras this year, money my parents could have spent on other things. I have one year left in this district, but my brothers have six more. It would be great if we could get free lunches that were properly sized so we wouldn't all be so hungry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ethan. Next, I would like to ask Kara, no, Tanya Fink to come forward? No? Chrissy Jones.
Hi. So I'm here to advocate for better school lunches for our Pittsburgh students. Pittsburgh's current school lunch program is both expensive and disappointing. We were told that operating a self-supporting department would allow for more flexibility to provide well-balanced and nutritional food offerings from local sources. But instead, we pay a significant amount of money for our kids to have access to small main meals and limited side options that aren't clearly defined or communicated. Many families choose to pack their lunches to ensure healthier options, and so the program runs by pushing numerous sugary extras on the kids who buy. Because of this self-sustaining approach, for example, our elementary schools provide the following à la carte snacks on a rotating basis. Regular ice cream bars and popsicles, premium ice cream, big chocolate chip cookies and brownie cookies, chips, giant donuts with glaze and sprinkles or powdered sugar, Rice Krispie treats, fruit roll-ups, and chocolate chip muffins. These aren't part of a healthy lunch, and yet they're highly accessible and of course tempting to younger children who often eat them first during the short lunch period and then throw away their mains, their fruit, or their vegetables. Each family is in charge of placing restrictions on their kids' meals, but kids shouldn't have access to this many unhealthy options in the first place. I see so much room for improvement, starting with opting in to the National School Lunch Program before the deadline to take advantage of the New York State's Universal School Meals Program like our neighboring districts of Fairport, HFL, Penfield, Victor, Brighton, and Webster, et cetera. I would really like to be on your committee. That was an add-on. But I have researched twenty-nine school districts across the state with similar median household incomes and percentages of persons below the poverty line. And about eighty-eight percent of them are currently enrolled in the NSLP. I have poured over their websites and menus to compare meal quality, their variety, and price. Many districts provide online nutritional content or allergen information per item, and they offer halal or kosher food items. I have seen schools that highlight local foods and they celebrate local vendors, schools that have enrolled in sustainability and composting initiatives, schools that have provided online menus with pictures and opportunities to rate the items, and schools who have taken extra effort to clearly communicate healthy options, item requirements, and how to avoid food waste. We need to significantly improve the quality and nutrition, quantity, cost, transparency, communication, and sustainability aspects of Pittsburgh's school lunch program. So many other New York State school districts are doing it better, and I think we can too.
Thank you. Would Carrie Masha please come forward? Carrie? She's not here. Okay. And finally, we will have Kara Asipovich. Okay. Well, that concludes our public comment.
A couple of things are necessary, I think, when, when you look for a path of least resistance for positive change. And I, you know, one is parents and students taking the time to come in and write and be thoughtful relative to changes that they want to see. And I can't thank you all enough who came in and were, this is what public comments should be. You were respectful, you came with your data, you came with passion, and you came with your opinion, and you came with an idea that you'd like to see at the end. So thank you. The other part is we have our food service director, Elena, in the back. Elena, can you just stand up and wave real quick? I want to thank Elena because it takes someone really brave and a desire to, to really continuously improve to stay here and be open to listening to, to feedback. This is Elena's second year here. And I shared with Elena that she didn't have to come tonight, that if she had anything else on her calendar to do it, and I would, I would relay what was shared to her. And she said, no, I want to be here because I want to hear what, what the concerns are. I'm really comfortable and confident that this is an issue that we're going to get better. And there's not a better person than Elena who has the drive and the creativity to do that. I did hear a couple of times the concern about the July twenty-ninth date. I hope that's like out of your minds right now. So again, without me asking Elena to do this. She has done her research, she's met with the state once or twice already. And so she is doing a lot of paperwork for each of the nine schools to have that approved, have them submitted by next week. So the July twenty-ninth doesn't matter. I will reiterate the work that we have to do, which I think is important if we want to do this well. We need to make sure we do our diligence. So in short order, we'll be reaching out to our wonderful PTSA presidents and our PDA unit presidents and our PDTA.
and our PDA unit presidents, our PDTA and principals around student reps. And we're going to pull a committee together that can really help us not only now but continue to drive improvement within this concept of meals and universal lunch. The other thing, just to do our diligence, obviously, we have to send out a survey. Really want to make sure that we are getting the whole community's voice involved. And then I would rely on our committee work to look at, along with our conversations with the state and what it is we need or don't need in order to make improvements, whether it's entering the program in full, in part, breakfast, lunch, both. But we do, I do have concerns right now of, this isn't going to be flipping a switch and tomorrow we're all in. We are going to have to look at hiring, which is an obstacle but not impossible, and our serving lines and all unintended consequences. So we're all in, we want, we want the same thing you do. You know, we want our kids to have a nutritious and delicious lunch for all. So thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Bureau. And now may I have a motion for adjournment? Thank you. All in favor? The ayes have it. Thank you so much.